Good evening.
Move it on. Oh, good.
Good evening. And thank you for joining us on September 18th of the City Council meeting. If you could please stand for the pledge.
Pledge of the flag, in the United States of America, and to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Local.
Mayor Follendorf?
Here.
Vice Mayor Herman?
Here.
Councilmember Beale?
Here.
Councilmember Matilde?
Here.
Councilmember Olivera?
Here.
Item number two, approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any public comment? Nope. Okay, and is there... Sorry. Moved by Councilmember Olivera, seconded by Vice Mayor. Oh, opposite. Yeah, sorry.
Start again. I made the motion and...
Moved by... yeah.
Aye.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Okay, can we wait just one minute?
Yes, we can. We'll wait a moment.
Make a presentation to the chief. We need the chief.
Yep, I know. Well, I thought he was standing right there.
There he is.
We'll bite off your hand.
Maybe I should have you do it.
No way.
Okay, so... Okay, he's back there. Okay, so...
Amanda, I've turned the microphone out there in case you want to use that one.
Okay, so next on the agenda is presentation of an award to our chief, to Todd Fordal. And so I'm going to ask Todd to come on up, and then I'm going to move to the other microphone. Okay. Can you hear... okay. So... Thank you and congratulations on your retirement. Thank you for your service. Todd has been with us for 15 years. And Coda, he's also on the... Todd has built quite an impressive K-9 program within our department. He has also not only mentored within his own department, but also mentored those out in the community. And is very well respected in that. And has also created quite the loyalty and dedication of his department to the city. And among a countless many other things. And so as behalf of the city, on behalf of the City Council and staff, thank you. And we wish you and your family the best of luck in the next adventure of your lives.
Thank you so much.
He's ready for retirement.
Now, at this time, if there's any other councilmembers that wish to say anything, or the public that would wish to come up and say anything.
Todd, I'd just like to say thank you for your service and we wish you the best of luck. We know that it's been hard with your family across the country. So, good for you and say hi to the family and we'll watch you on Facebook.
I wanted to say something also because when I first moved here, that's one of the police or one of the contacts I had most often is because we had our alarm system. We couldn't quite figure it out. So then we found out it was a very short time from which the alarm rang and the police arrived. And then I always remember the one time in which the chief turned up. And that was the most embarrassing of all because the dog moved and I put the wrong alarm on and the dog set it off right. So anyway, but again, that's the thing I've heard from so many of the citizens is that the timing in which, you know, you're able to arrive so quickly, it's been wonderful. And I've seen, I've been very impressed with the police department from the very beginning. And so you've done such a wonderful job of keeping it up with the times. Also, I would say, the thing that also impressed me is that I see that you're a man of principle. And whatever, those principles that you have, and I know you're a strong Christian, those principles have applied to the things that you do as a chief, that you were guided by those principles, and I think they've been a great help to our city. So thank you.
And to everybody, thank you for coming, I appreciate it. And I expect to send off, it's been very nice and I enjoy it very much. It's been my pleasure to serve the community and the citizens who visit Angels Camp. So thank you. And I wish everybody the best and I'm sure I'll see you again when you come back to visit.
Moving on to the next agenda item, it is public comment. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to adjust the council on any matters not on the agenda. State law prohibits the City Council from acting upon matters not listed on the agenda. Is there any public comment? Okay. Item number five, consent agenda. The following consent agenda items are expected to be routine and they are acted upon the council at one time without discussion. Any councilmember, staff member, or interested party may request that any consent item be removed. We have two consent agenda items. Is there any public comment? Again, move it to council, is there any public, any council discussion?
I'd like to pull item B.
Any other? Nope, okay. Is there a motion to approve item A?
Moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, item...
Yeah, item B. I always just like to take a moment to thank anyone who's willing to step up and serve the public like this. And so I wanted to thank Jana Bidwell for taking on this position on the Museum Commission. And I also wanted to thank Ann Forrest for her efforts to date. So when it's part of the consent agenda, it just kind of gets passed over and I just wanted to just take the time to say thank you.
Is she here tonight?
I don't see Jana here tonight.
Okay. I can see what she looked like. Okay, is there any other council comment? Public comment? Nope.
With that, I'll move to approve item B.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Regular agenda. Item A, the Calvers Visitor's Bureau Annual Report to the City of Angels for Fiscal Year Funding 2017-18. Lisa Bolton.
Hi, hello, everybody. Thank you so much for giving us the opportunity to report. I'm doing things a little bit differently as you normally, I come up and I do a PowerPoint presentation, but I have a printed report this time that I thought we could go through together. There are additional copies up here if anybody would like one and... So let me give everybody an opportunity to open up their annual reports. So let's open to page two, which is the first page. We just start out with our mission statement there. I'm not going to read through all of this, I'm just going to provide additional notes and I'll let you read these in entirety at your leisure. There is a lot of data in here. So in the beginning part, I just explain how we are working with other organizations, just as a reminder that we don't work in a vacuum. We are integrated into the state's tourism marketing through not only our individual outreach, like submitting story ideas directly to Visit California, but also through our regional marketing groups, the Gold Country Visitors Association and the High Sierra Visitors Council. We also work closely with DMA West, our industry association, which has about 150 members, and it provides studies, data, and education to the destination marketing organization industry. Destinations International is another group we work with. It's the international version of DMA West. And it provides the same services, but at an international level. It's prohibitively expensive for us to join individually, so we just take the educational information that's publicly available because they do international studies as well on tourism. So you'll see this first graph here just shows how we're funded. And then if we go on to page three, I want to draw your attention to the fact that there's a huge economic impact of tourism overall. Tourism doesn't just generate TOT taxes and lodging revenue. It generates millions of dollars annually in destination spending. So you, and this information was derived from Dean Runyon Report, Visit California, the state's destination marketing organization contracts with Dean Runyon to pull these numbers together. So for Calaveras County as a whole, including the City of Angels Camp, for 2017, $193 million was generated in spending in Calaveras County through tourism. $55.7 million was spent on food service, $23.9 million on transportation and gas, $45.2 million on lodging, $17.8 million on retail, $28.6 million on recreation, and $13.6 million on groceries. So then we just describe in this little graph here how we receive our funding from both the county and the city, and it shows the trend here. We do have some, have received some recent data from Melissa and from the City of Angels Camp showing that TOT was down last year for the City of Angels Camp. We have a little bit of, we're still trying to reconcile what exactly that means and how our numbers differ from the city's numbers. So as soon as I have definitive information on that, I'll report back to you. So for page four, the website that we launched in August 27th shows really impressive visitor numbers, engagement, and a very low bounce rate, which is a good thing. That means people coming onto the website and leaving really quickly. We have a very low rate of that. About 30% bounce rate is industry standard, and we're at a lot lower than that. I also want to draw your attention to the box on the top right which shows the economic impact of each visitor to a DMO website based on a study from 2017 by the DMA West. It shows, using their average, this would mean that the economic impact of the CVB's website alone for 2017-18 was $7,855,615. Notice also on the web visitor age range that we are trying to appeal to a younger demographic. We have been lowering that demographic over years, realizing that the traditional demographic for Angels Camp is older and it is kind of retiring out of tourism. And so we need to appeal to younger people, and we've managed to do that. Page five, we have our online booking engine, which is doing really well. We also have a great deal of content creation. That's very important for a destination marketing organization because it means that people have a one-stop shop where they can find all the information, and that helps to develop the professional status of the website so people come there first. We continue to generate engaging content for the website, cementing our reputation as the go-to website for the destination. We take this content and we send it out in visitor newsletters, and we also boost those posts on Facebook. Each piece of content that we generate is used multiple times to leverage its value on our different platforms. So you can see the engagement rate of some of our top blogs for the 2017-18 fiscal year here. And actually, this is not the engagement rate on our social media platforms. This is how many people visited those stories on our website. So we would have had additional engagement on our social media platforms. And then we go into our newsletters, and the really good engagement rate, the average open rate for the industry is 15.53. And you can see that our visitor newsletters have a 24% open rate, whereas our industry newsletters have an even higher open rate at 43%. So on page six, social media marketing stats continue on an impressive trajectory. Following City Council's direction to track Angels Camp-specific posts, we've included some of that information here. And you can see that the percentage of city Facebook, Twitter, and Twitter posts is 48%, while the city Instagram posts are at 42%. So we're giving really good value to the City of Angels Camp here by getting close to a 50-50 split on county and city posts on our social media platforms. And then we have a list here of our top five performing Facebook posts. And by the way, our Facebook fans, obviously, that continues to grow, and now we have incredible reach. We're at over 48,000 followers now on Facebook since this report was generated. The Calaveras Experience Guide continues to be a really important marketing piece for us. We publish these every year. We have a very robust distribution of 80,000. And you can see all of the stats on that. And that's the physical distribution, but we also have a digital copy that is accessed from our website as well, and we get thousands of downloads of that every year. I don't know if it's in here, I think it was about, oh, there we go. Electronic version access is 14,148. So these, one of the reasons that we still are doing a print advertising piece or a print travel guide, this is based on a study by DMA West from 2014 that showed that $48 was calculated per guide received by potential visitors, that there was a $48 value per guide received for people coming into the market. And that translates into longer stays and more spending in destination. So there is, obviously, that study showing that's still a very viable marketing piece to put together, that it has good response and generates more spending in destination, and that's why we still do this piece. So we're not, we're not all just digital these days. Another thing that the report showed was that 70% of people who requested the guide visited the destinations. That's also a very important statistic. So on page eight, so I mentioned at the beginning here that a visitor center is not an essential part of destination marketing organization function, but it does allow us to encourage longer stays and to create individualized itineraries for people when they come in and really get them excited about staying in Angels Camp and in Calaveras County. And we also get to track a bunch of data on the visitors that come in to the visitor center. So this page is full of that data. And we also offer opt-in to our VIP program. So everybody that comes in that is staying for more than just an hour, or even if they're just staying an hour and they're just visiting one restaurant, we sign them up for our visitor VIP program. And then they get discounts from participating businesses around the county, including multiple businesses in Angels Camp. So that helps to drive the visitors into those different businesses. And so this year, we had 1,502 visitor center signups and 1,185 online signups. And then you can see the trend on the visitor center guest traffic. We're working on improving that because we have gone down this year over last year. I put that down to a couple of things. One of them is that Worldmark has been closed or had significant number of their rooms closed for a significant part of the year, and so that had a direct impact on visitor center guests coming into the visitor center. A really fun thing that I'm not going to spend much time on, but I really love, is I love the map that shows where people come from. Let's not forget that this is Angels Camp specific, so this is people that are coming into the visitor center. So we can't extrapolate out from this and say that this is the typical visitor to Calaveras County, but we can definitely say that's a typical visitor for Angels Camp. So we can see where our biggest drive market is, and that's the San Francisco Bay area, followed by the Central Valley, followed by local Gold Country visitors. And then, of course, beyond that, we have Southern California, and then outside of that, we have the Nevada area, Reno and Las Vegas. So, and then we have all of the international stats as well. So on to page, on to page 10. It's really important for us to know what the reputation of our destination is. And it's really good to know what stories are trending on the destination so that we can make use of those stories and we can publicize them and we can mitigate any negativity that might be coming up. So we do contract with a company that provides all of that data for us. And so these are some of the stories that we shared on our website and on our Facebook posts and in our content. So we also do some traditional print, radio, and online advertising. This year, we continued with our sunset advertising. We continued with our Gold Country Visitors Association co-op ad in the California Visitors Guide. We continued with monthly Capitol Public Radio and other NPR stations coverage, which we tend to focus on seasons and big events. We also signed this year a TripAdvisor Professional Partnership, which means that we've created a bunch of content that people will find when they go looking for things to do and places to stay, entertainment and attractions in Angels Camp and Calaveras County. We also have a search engine marketing four-month contract of this last year. These show up as Google and additional search engine ads and paid listings. So if you've searched for something that is Calaveras-related, you might find those, our Calaveras ads coming up on your web browser. So that's where you'll see those. Facebook, we do ongoing advertising year-round. We have two strategies for that. One is a pay-per-click that drives people to our website, and then we also have likes for our Facebook page. We have an ongoing partnership with listings and coverage with links throughout, through our website to, from Dog Tracker. People traveling with their dogs is a growing trend, and so it's really important for us to appeal to those people. And Dog Tracker is a very popular place for people to get information about where to travel with their dogs. And so we're included in there as well. Waze is a new online advertising navigational system, kind of like Google Maps, only better and has more social components. And you can report on things in real time. And then you can also see other Waze people as you're driving. Is anybody familiar with Waze?
Yeah, it changed because you had said something about it, and it's much better.
Good, good. I highly recommend it. If you haven't used it before, download the app to your phone and try it out. So the one thing my son says is that sometimes it'll take you around the back of a building, and it's very confusing if it doesn't bring you to the front at first. But what it does is it does the logical thing. So if it seems like it's ended you up in some weird place, it's the back of the building you were trying to get to, so. So one thing that we do is we set up travel itineraries for journalists and travel writers, social media influencers. We did nine of those this year. And you'll see that a lot of them are tied into our Canadian advertising that we signed a contract with for Gold Country Visitors Association. So we're doing a big push on Gold Country for Vancouver Media. We did multiple things this year. So this, by the way, this report does not include everything we do. It's just the highlights. So this just shows the fam trips that came out here, but we also sent delegates out to Canada, and we had coverage on breakfast TV about Gold Country. So that was really, really a cool thing, and that's how we kicked off our Canadian advertising and journalistic coverage, basically. So I'm on page 12 here, where we launched this Hot Lightly program this last year. And the reason we did that was because more than 70% of visitors are looking for tourism sustainability in their travel options. Plus, we need to protect our natural environment to ensure the future of tourism jobs and tourism-generated tax revenue for years to come for the county and the city. So it's really important that we don't just promote the tourism that's available now, but that we help to protect what we have here so that we have it for generations to come. We have a very robust tourism industry, and we just need to make sure that we're really well supporting the tourism businesses that are here and not making problems for them and not making it so that local individuals and businesses are the only ones looking out for this. We need to step up and do our part as well. So that's why we created the Hot Lightly program. We developed an educational component to help people understand how to behave in the wild and outdoor environments that we have available here in Angels Camp and in Calaveras County. Good ways to behave. We developed some Packet Out bi-degradable bags that people can use when they're going on our trail systems. Because one of the things that we do is we kind of monitor the heartbeat of tourism in Calaveras County through social media. And when we see local people posting about not liking tourists coming on the trail systems because they leave trash, then we realize we have to help do something about that. We have to step up and do our part and make sure that we help keep these trail systems in good shape for people to use. So that's why we developed the Packet Out bags. We partnered with, partnered with, who did we partner with? Thank you, Cal Waste. It's right in there, isn't it? We partnered with Cal Waste to have trash and recycle bins for pickup, for dealing with the trash that comes using these Packet Out bags, which we are currently giving out in the visitor center, but that have also been given out in other places like the Glamping tents at Bear Valley Mountain have been giving them out as well. And we're going to be finding additional locations throughout the county to make sure these are available and really widespread. And also, they've been at some of the trailheads for the Arnold Rim Trail. We also developed some hydration bottles, and what we're calling hydration stations. So anytime anybody buys a water bottle, they can get them filled up free at the Calaveras Visitor Center, and we have hydration stations throughout the county. We are just, we've just now ordered some window clings that will go on the front of businesses that are offering these free fill-up-your-water bottles. And the benefit to that is, one, you get hikers coming into your business to fill up their water bottle, and while they're in there, they might be inspired to buy some goodies. Or if it's at a restaurant, you know, they might be inspired to sit down and have dinner. But it's a free program, and the idea is to reduce the use of single-use plastic bottles, which are going to end up on our trails. So that's just one other aspect of it. So what is the main program purpose? As I said, it's to protect the tourism industry so that we can continue to generate taxes from tourism, we can continue to support our tourism businesses, and there isn't a massive downside because of problems created by tourism. We want to be protecting the spaces locals love. We know that sustainability attracts. And looking forward, we hope to encompass more of the logistical side of what's needed for sustainable tourism, including tourism workforce, housing, transportation, training, and broadband access issues. So those are all on the table as part of the program. So something else that we do on page 14 here. We don't just provide destination marketing and visitor services, we also provide individual business and community support in the form of education, consultation, collaboration, and we serve on multiple boards. So you can read this at your leisure. There's a lot of information on here about what we do. We have a page here on the publications. We do a Calaveras Holiday Shopping Guide. We take each of our little communities and we talk about the top places for people to enjoy shopping. Retail is very, very popular during the holidays in Calaveras. We have those perfect... We have those perfect little downtowns that are so appealing to visitors, and so that seemed like a no-brainer to us that we start publishing that, and we've been doing that for several years now. That's available as a print item for any retail business. We provide a PDF that they can print out at their business as well. We have it on our website, we have a digital version, and they can share it. All of the businesses, also all of the businesses that we, that we feature in the Holiday Shopping Guide, we make sure to let them know that they're featured in there, and that they can use that guide to help promote their business. We also developed a couple of years ago, the Calaveras Wine and Recipe Bottles. Those are extremely popular at travel and trade shows. The Calaveras Wine Grape Alliance partnered with us on that. We both distribute them, we have them in the visitor center. We have 10 varietals, so each bottle features a varietal. It has tasting notes, it tells you where in Calaveras County you can buy a bottle of that varietal, and then on the back, a local restaurateur, local chef, has written a recipe that includes that varietal. So those, those ones are very popular. Okay, so on to page 16. The CBB advocates for the local and regional tourism industry and recognizes outstanding tourism businesses that prac, I'm sorry, and recognizes outstanding tourism business practices publicly at our Innovations in Tourism Awards that we do at our annual dinner every year. And they also get recognition from state legislators. So, that is coming up. We have our annual dinner, which is taking place on October 11th. I know that's going to be a tough date for some of you if you have a planning commission meeting, but I really hope that anybody here that's interested will attend. It's going to be at the Pickle Patch, and we have a, an amazing slate of businesses that have been nominated for the Innovations in Tourism this year. You should be receiving invitations in the mail. We've also emailed them out, and there's also an, an online form where you can vote for the different businesses and the different categories of the Innovations in Tourism Awards. So, I really hope you do that. And that's how we help to recognize really outstanding work that's being done here in Calaveras County and by individual tourism businesses. So, we also attend trade shows every year. Trade shows are a really invaluable tool for us to directly sell our destination to travel consumers. We base that on their specific interests. They come up to us, we talk to them, we find out what they're interested in, we help to create specific itineraries for them. It's an absolute delight to do, because everybody is very thrilled, and even though there isn't a way for us to track who comes out here, we are constantly being told, when we go to these travel shows, well, now you just made me want to go. So, hopefully, we have good ROI on that, but some of these things are hard to track. It also gives us an opportunity to see what new things consumers are interested in in their tourism experience. And then, we, we collect consumer emails. So every year that we do these trade shows, we run sweepstakes, a Calaveras getaway, and that allows us to collect emails, which we then put into our constant contact list, and then we can do follow-up marketing with those people and encourage them to come out to Calaveras County. And it also helps us to monitor destination name recognition and enthusiasm over time. And I have to tell you, so I've been with the Calaveras Visitors Bureau for six years, but before that, I was with Cave and Mine Adventures for 13 years, marketing the caves and the gold mines, and, and I have seen a huge increase in name recognition for Calaveras County and Angels Camp, and always, the thing that people know about this area is the frog jump. So, but yeah, it's really increased over the years. I think our being at those trade shows over and over again has really helped. So, we also, as I mentioned earlier, we work with our regional partners. Just a couple of highlights from the Gold Country Visitors Association and the High Sierra Visitors Council, those are the two regional marketing organizations that we work with, that signed a contract with Visit California, giving those organizations $60,000 in matching funds, and we're part of that. So that means part of our funding goes to these matching fund programs that are marketed out by Visit California. So, for, for the Gold Country Visitors Association this year, Calaveras County was featured in the California 101 video series. We are basically the, the example of a, of a Gold Country county. So there are nine Gold Country counties, but they selected us to be the representative for the whole Gold Country. And that includes video content on the Angels Camp Museum, so that's included in there. So, the premise for this particular video series is they take a major attraction for an area, and they say, what other things can you do around that? So when you go to visit Calaveras Big Tree State Park, which is how they, which is how they positioned this one, what other things can you do? And so, they included Angels Camp Museum and Ironstone Vineyards, so they included multiple things. So, what we get to do as part of that, so it's, this doesn't just happen, we hear that there's a program for 101, the California 101 program, we hear the description of it, and so we submit an itinerary for them to come and shoot for Calaveras County, and then we did get selected as the county that represents Gold Country, which is very cool. So, for California's High Sierra, the High Sierra Visitors Council, one of the things that that group contracted with Visit California for this year was to be featured as a destination in a travel trade training app. So, Visit California has launched a training app for travel trade internationally and locally and nationally, to learn more about different destinations within California, and we are included in that. So that's one of the really cool programs. We got a five-paragraph descriptive write-up, we are able to upload a downloadable Calaveras Experience Guide, we created a photo gallery for them, we also linked in the Murphy's Under the Rain Radar wine tasting, we linked to our website, and we also, that also includes foreign language translations. So all of that is based in an app that Visit California is promoting to help train travel trade about California tourism, which is a very big deal. So, I was really thrilled. On page 18, we just give an overview of one of our integrated marketing pieces. It just shows the full scope of the marketing we produced for one event last year, the Mark Twain Wild West event, and shows the results of each integrated piece. And you can see that we had some major engagement with that. I'm very proud of the work we did on this. This is an example of the kind of thing that we do all the time, and this is just from, you know, marketing one particular event. So the next page just lists the current CBB Board of Directors and former CBB Board of Directors for this last fiscal year. We had kind of an unusual year, because we were changing up our bylaws, and so we had additional board members added, and we had some drop out. So that's why we have a really huge list. They did not all serve at the same time. And then, on the back, we are very excited to mention, looking forward to 2018, 19, some exciting projects that are in the works right now. We are producing two videos this fiscal year to promote living and working in Calaveras County, marketing both tourism and economic development. This is a perfect way that we can work in conjunction with the Economic Development Departments of, of Angels Camp and the county, bringing our marketing expertise and helping to also leverage all of those tourists coming out to the county and potentially bring them in as new business owners or residents. We are also inspired by Linda Herman to develop a, a Historic Walk Tour app for Angels Camp and other historic downtowns. We're starting with Angels Camp. We're very excited about it. Cadence, our digital marketing manager, is heading up the project. We're going to be collaborating with local historians. It's going to be really fun. I wish I was heading up the project, because I wish I could just, like, work on that right now, that would be so much fun. But anyway, this is something that should be produced. It will be produced this fiscal year, so we're very excited about it. One of the things that we notice is that when people follow the Historic Downtown Tour, it's a brilliant tour, but it doesn't, the, the, the diagrams that show the buildings as they were don't match up with how they look now, and so people have a really hard time figuring out where they are, in front of which building. And so this will actually have, it'll have a narration, it'll have photography, it'll have stories, we're going to get different people narrating different parts of it. So it's just going to be really fun, and I'm really excited. I'm really delighted that Linda brought it up, because we're looking forward to working on that so much. We are also developing an immersive storytelling module on our website. That's going to feature the economic development videos, and then we're going to be doing more social media marketing, because we brought Cadence on, who is our digital marketing manager now, as a full-time employee, as opposed to a part-time employee, and she's just been doing stellar work since she's been with the CBB, and now we get to have her for longer, doing more projects. And then, we still have our Mark Twain teaser video series, initially to promote the Mark Twain Wild West Fest this year, and then we'll be expanding it to include the rest of the county, and of course, the Jumping Frog Jubilee. So we'll have Pat Connet, who's offered to participate completely free of charge, and he will be discovered in surprising and unexpected places, and then we'll send those out, and we won't explain them at first, and hopefully create some social media buzz about it. Do we have any questions?
Yes.
On the Historic Walk for Angels, is there enough cell service to accommodate that or to?
The great thing about an app is, once you download it, you don't need any cell coverage. You still are going to be accessing the GPS, because that's not affected by it either. So it'll know where you are, and you actually create kind of a catchment area for each different subject that you're talking about. So once they step into it, that information can either automatically start playing, or they can opt-in to, to hear it. But yeah, no, there shouldn't be a problem. And in fact, we can put that information on the app inside some of the downtown windows as well, so people know. It'd be good to have some kind of indicator on the building, maybe the historic plaques that we've been talking about, that show people for sure where they are, so they can orient themselves, but the app will also be doing that.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
Public comment? Nope. Okay. Thank you.
I do want to tell you that the, the video, that the California 101 video is available on our website in multiple places, and probably the easiest way to get to it would be to, to go to the Arnold page, and then it's just in the overview of Arnold, kind of the splash page for Arnold, so if you click on that and scroll down, you can watch that whole video there. I was going to play it for you today, but I know you've got a lot going on, so.
Yeah. Lisa, I'd just like to thank you for this. This is a, there's a lot of information to digest, and it's been presented in such a professional manner, and your efforts are incredible, and you and your staff will be applauded. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, awesome.
Well, we love doing this work, so.
I was going to say something too, just the responsiveness, you know, that, you know, just even the suggestion, all of a sudden you go, well, that's a good idea, you know, so that kind of responsiveness and embracing, you know, ideas, I really appreciate it.
Well, we're here to please the City of Angels Camp, so anything you, you want doing that we're not doing yet, let us know, we'll, we'll look into it, we'll see if it's possible. We, usually it is, so just chat to us about it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 6B, Authorization for City Administrator to Proceed With the City of Angels Cal Waste Low Income Rate Assistance Program. So, Amy.
Madam Mayor, councilmembers, this is to implement part of the agreement that you have with Cal Waste. Basically, it's to give low-income residents a break of up to 12.5% of their trash hauling fees, if you will. We've tried to keep it as simple as humanly possible, so that it doesn't take a lot of our staff time. So basically, we're looking at piggybacking straight off of a PG&E care program that's already in existence. They've already established income levels, they already have forms that people fill out, and in effect, this program would require somebody to come in and show that they're already in the PG&E care programs for getting reductions on their electrical bills, and they would also then be able to get it on their solid waste, their garbage bills also. The way we would do outreach for this is basically, again, we tried to keep it simple. City website, mailer, in water, wastewater invoices, we would go to the apartment complexes, the affordable housing complexes, the mobile home parks, hand out the flyers to make sure that all of their residents are aware of it, as well as trying to contact any of the social service organizations that might have outreach to people who might want to take advantage of this. We've developed a very complicated-looking application, one page, with a half-page where they simply sign and commit to the fact that they're telling us the truth. We're going to take their word for it, basically, if they were able to get on with PG&E care, we figure they've gotten the documentation they need. On that Page Five form that we would use, we will be crossing out, if you're not a participant of PG&E care program, please complete applicable forms. We decided to keep it really, really simple. You're either in a PG&E care program already, and so you get coverage under our Cal Waste program, or you're not. And that kept us from having about 12 different forms that might have to be filled out, and using a bunch of staff time. Yes?
Was the 12% reduction, that was part of the negotiated deal we had with Cal Waste?
Correct, 12 and a half percent.
How does that compare to what people get from PG&E if they qualify?
A good question. I do not know the answer to that. I know that for this, it, it's not a huge reduction they're going to get in their bill. It's basically like a dollar seventy-five a month, or about $33 a year. It's not huge, but it's some. I do not know what they get for PG&E. I can find that out and report back.
Yeah, okay. Good to know.
It would have been good.
If we started with the 12%, because we negotiated, but we can put that in the file for.
This is an annual renewal program, so perhaps next year, we could consider that. This year, our open enrollment would be October. The idea is that once a year, we would all have open enrollment for people. They do have to re-enroll every year.
I know, it's probably in the data, and I apologize for not picking it out, but what percentage of the population base in Angels do you think might qualify for this?
Wild guess, based on very bad information that we get from the Census Bureau. Maybe 300, max.
So 10%, a little less than 10% of the population.
Yeah, right around 10.
When you say, now, we, we're talking about households, you know.
Households.
Households, so it's a little higher.
I was, yeah, I was actually giving you individuals. Be closer to 100, 150, because we have about two and a half people per household is our average.
Okay, thank you.
I was wondering, Amy, on page four, it said that actually, unless this is not the exact, for us, this is, I don't know if this is an example for in our city, but it says the current single-family residential Cal Waste bill is $22 for 35 gallons.
Yes.
And then it says, program implementation would reduce the bill to 1925, so it'd be a little bit more of a savings, unless I'm reading something wrong, just says $33 a year.
From 22 to 1925?
Yeah, so it's what, $33 a year, $3.57 a month, I guess.
I came out to $1.75. My math, it's entirely possible I did my math wrong.
Oh, okay.
22 times 12.5%.
275.
Okay. 275, which is.
Oh, according to this sheet.
Anyway. Believe it or not, I actually used to be able to do math really, really well. I'm going to blame it on the calculator.
I just, oh, yes, wondering, okay.
Any other questions?
Any public comment? So, okay. Do I need to make a motion?
I'll move too.
Or the consent, okay, item motion?
I'll move. To approve.
Operate.
Okay. Authorization of City Administrator to Proceed With the City of Angels Cal Waste Low Income Rate Assistance Program.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. By the way, so move there, Councilmember Matoli, seconded by Vice Mayor.
Vice who?
Vice Mayor. Okay. Item C, Approval of Resolution 1842, a resolution eliminating the position of a city engineer public work director and reallocating funding from the position to the general fund.
funding from the position to the general fund. Melissa.
So the item is as presented with one point of clarification. The resolution reads reallocating the funding from the position to professional services. And that is as the item should read. And I have no additional information to present.
At this time, is there any public comment?
Excuse me, Bert Soban, from here in Angels camp. I question the logic of eliminating the engineering position especially. Probably the biggest thing to manage in the city is the infrastructure. Granted, you can selectively pick projects, hire a consultant, and manage that project. But selecting the project is not just a simple thing. I don't think you, as a group, are qualified to judge which is the most prop, most important infrastructure item when compared to two or three others. So for a long-term reliability and sustainability, the most logical person to do that and have the background is a city engineer. Thank you.
Any other public comment?
Patsy Gonzalez, 1600 Depot Road. I'm questioning this also, having worked in the geosciences and working with wastewater and well drilling and things like that. I'm questioning this because, I mean, we recently lost our city planner and we gained somebody just really terrific with Amy Augustine and her associates. But, you know, you don't always get somebody really great to replace somebody. Our water is really important to us. How our wastewater is handled is also very important to us. And I feel like that needs to be somebody very stable for us that's handling so many intricacies, the maximum level of contaminants, you know, that are in our water. Just, there's so many jobs that our engineer is taking care of for us. And so I'm questioning this. Thank you.
Any other public comment before we bring it back to council?
Can I speak?
Yep.
Well, you guys have probably heard this before, but this isn't the first time I've been through this. I hired onto the City of Oakdale the same way that I hired onto the City of Angels. And they had gone through a long period of having their own contract city engineer, same way that Angels did. And they ran into problems. And they decided back then they wanted to have a staff engineer. Oakdale course imploded. They fired all the, this got rid of all the department heads, got rid of the city manager, got rid of me at that same time. And this job opened up, and so I've been here ever since. When I showed up here, not many people know this, but I was supposed to be doing a lot of projects. I was supposed to be hiring on two more engineers and an engineering tech. We had an incredible CIP to do a bunch of improvements to the water and the wastewater treatment plant that were being planned. None of that came true real quickly. We ran, as soon as I got here, I realized we had money problems. We couldn't afford this stuff until the rates were improved. And I quickly realized that I was going to do more of a management job than I am really an engineering job. And so ever since then, I've really been more of an utilities manager than I have as an engineer. So my leadership, my style's a little bit different. I'm more of a leader on managing the crews. And this is, this is the value that I provide to the city, is that I provide leadership to the crews, divisions. I keep the continuity of the goals and efforts, and I focus on the areas that need improvements. And also do some medium-range planning. The technical aspects of the job aren't really incredibly difficult, but they do follow those goals. So basically, I plan and then implement what the plan is and manage basically the business. With this, you guys can actually be proud. When I started here, the wastewater treatment plant was in a mess. There was a lot of personnel problems. The public works side was doing very well. Right now, as it comes to this day, about six years later, the treatment plants are doing excellent. And the public works crew, even though they're a little bit stumbling here and there, they're still doing very good. You really have a very good-running treatment plants. So for the last week, I'm going to sum it up real quick. So for the last week, I've been kind of the depressing guy that shows up because everybody's heard word of this and then they start asking questions. And I'm the big, what do you want to say, downer on their day because they're asking questions that they don't know why. The first question they always ask is why. Then the second question, I had to write these down because I wouldn't remember. The second question is asked, why now, not when the City Gate report's done or when the sales tax is decided. They also ask, does anybody know what they're doing? Why aren't they considering a citywide reorganization? You seem to be just chopping off bits and pieces without really thinking what's really going to happen down the road. A bunch of other comments, which really, they're just being mean. But from my standpoint, there was a couple of questions I had that, basically, from the description of the item for tonight, it looks like you're anticipating a huge general fund savings. In the engineering department, we got between the two of us, it's split. We have about $8,000 in general fund. So it's not a large general fund savings. Also, with all the things that I know that I do, I don't know if anybody's anticipating the services that will be cut. There's going to be quite a bit of things that I do just from managing, not only my stuff, but also the stuff left over from the planning department reorg, that are going to fall by the wayside. And one of the questions that somebody else asked me is, what happens to the other staff? Will this put them in the crosshairs? People are worried about what's going to happen. Don't want to beat a dead horse, but I do want to tell you that I appreciate the chance to tell you my side. I'd intended to stay here in the city until I retired, which was about another six years or so. And I also have a lot of plans to implement and problems to correct, so there's a lot of work ahead of us. But I've enjoyed my time here, and so I just want to thank you guys and wish you well on your decision, so. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Good.
Any other public comment? Okay, at this time, we'll bring it back to council.
I'd like to ask Melissa if she could give a further explanation, on a fuller explanation of just kind of the reasoning behind this and all of that at this time.
I have no additional information to provide. Item is as, it's adjourned.
No other council comment? At this time, I'm going to ask for a motion.
Well, I would, you know, I do have some of the questions about, you know, waiting and reevaluating after the City Gate is just a thought that I had. Just want to be sure that we're not going to get in deep water over our heads, but anyway, that's just my thought.
Any other council comment?
Regarding the City Gate thing, we were expecting two major things out of that. One is financing and one is organizational structure. Might be wise to wait for that, to see how that is. This is not crystal clear about how that, those departments thinking engineering and public works are effectively managed. It looks like the suggestion would be outsource both of those. Is that what you're recommending here? So we'd have an outsourced contractor overseeing public works employees and someone making decisions about engineering, what had to be engineered, literally engineered, on a job-by-job basis? That kind of the kind of the thinking?
So I think the thinking is to issue an RFP for a city engineer slash public works director. So often, that position is contracted out in smaller jurisdictions to the north and to the south of us. The oversight of the crews is to determined. I've considered potentially the contracting of potentially a previous public works foreman to come in and do an evaluation, make a determination of recommended staffing levels, and go from there. But at this point, the recommendation would be to contract out for those services, similar to the way that we've done the planning department.
So what other cities, Doug, that you're aware of operate this way?
Most of my sub-10,000 cities, so Sonora specifically. I believe Newman, but I'm not positive. And when you get to the, you know, 15,000, Oakdale, Riverbank, it's very common, well, they all have public works directors, but it's not uncommon for them to mix bag as it relates to the city engineer. A lot of them will contract for city engineers, then other ones will have some internally. And sometimes, you get lucky and you get the same person who can kind of do both. But I will say it's more usual in when you have a sub-10,000 population, just based off of scale of duties to contract those responsibilities.
Good.
So if I'm reading through the, reading through this correctly, I understand we have the sales tax vote coming up in November. I personally am of the belief that that, even if it passes, and that's questionable, but even if it passes, that's a Band-Aid. That really is not going to solve our problems. We have to grow our way out of this situation we're in, and our growth is slow. I think our biggest burden, or what scares me the most, what keeps me awake, is our unfunded retirement program. It's millions of dollars, and it's growing by millions of dollars every year. And so if we have an opportunity to outsource something, I think it's something we need to look at very, very closely. I know when I first came on the council, my first time I was on there, was just after we made the decision to go with a city engineer. We used to, we used to outsource all the engineering. And the timing was kind of bad because we had high bills with, I think it was Weber-Giio at the time. We had really high bills, but there's also a lot of development going on. And then it seemed like as soon as we brought the engineering in-house, the development slowed. And then we're paying salaries and bills that were probably more than we had paid if we'd have stayed independent. And now we're kind of, you know, so it's, it's a tough call. It's certainly not personal. But I think just looking at the retirement program down the line, I think we need to try to do what we can to try to stem the bleeding. And I think this, it makes sense. Are there going to be pains? Yeah. Are we going to lose some services? Yes. Can we afford all the services we'd like to provide? No. So I think in this case, Melissa has a plan. I think she understands the necessity in cutting where we can because it's going to take a long time to grow out of our issues, even with the sales tax increase. And I think this is just the first of many difficult decisions that we're going to be faced with in the near future.
Any other comment before we move for a motion?
I just want to make another comment. Looking at the unfunded retirement, I know that that's an increasing number. But also, City Gate was saying, don't build your decisions around that because that's something that is always there and it can overwhelm you if you concentrate too much on it. That's just something to keep in mind as well.
Well, I think that's the reason they brought down cities like Vallejo and Stockton. They let it overwhelm them until it did overwhelm them.
Well, what I mean is, they said, don't make your decisions based on that only because it's, you know, it's such, I know, it's something that's large and always looks overwhelming, but, you know. And it is bad.
It's not like this is the first time we've done, this is the way it used to be done many years ago before Dave was brought aboard. So it's not uncharted territory for us. Anyway. Well, I'll move the item. I'll move that we pass the resolution 18-42.
As stated in the agenda?
As stated in the agenda.
I'll second it.
We, all in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Five oh. Is there any?
No, I said aye. Yeah.
I heard a name. Yeah, we all, okay, we're good.
Trying to read now. So what was the vote?
Five oh.
Five oh. Motion approved, five oh. Item number seven, consolidated staff report. In front of the council members, there's a consolidated staff report by each department. Is there any comment by council?
I had one question about the Angel Oaks/Greenhorn Creek sign change. Someone asked me recently, so is that Dave or the question I would have?
So I am aware that Caltrans has ordered the sign, and so I will check the date on when they plan to have it installed, but I know that they have ordered it.
My question was, and this is what this person asked, was, is there going to be a light? They're not a light meaning, you know, stops, stoplight, but.
So they are doing a study to make that determination.
Oh, okay, I was wondering. I guess I'll update them. Study. Okay, thank you.
That would be nice.
Thank you.
Does that include the changing of the signs on Angel Oaks/Greenhorn Creek Road all the way through to reflect the change?
Right, we did talk about that when we approved the item and the name change. So I'm working with Emily and Dave, and we'll have a budget amendment for the purchase of the signs.
And I hope to encourage them to have a light.
Just a comment on finance. Don't need to get up, just a comment. I really appreciate the layout of this, issue-by-issue tracking, and, you know, hope to see that as things evolve, we keep this as kind of a live-action item checklist. It's very handy. Appreciate it. Thanks.
So if I might also comment on the board's action items from the previous minutes. We've started taking, keeping track of those as well in the minutes. One of the action items was the cost-benefit analysis of the fire truck payoff. So we are working with Nathan on that and he is determining if there's any assets that we could liquidate in order to accommodate that, potentially, the fire truck. We did contact the DA on the potential for cost recovery for fire suppression costs. So she's doing research for us on that. We did talk with FIRE about the education and outreach component, so that would be something that would take place at a future date. And then we will be bringing to City Council the water, wastewater rate study in October, I believe, the second meeting in October with the finance plan and a discussion of policy recommendations with the draft to be coming November 7th, I believe. The first meeting in November is what we're shooting for. It may end up being the second meeting, just depending on the workload of the consultant at that time. And then we continue to analyze the value of leasing the computer hardware. We have a request in for an equipment supply list, and then we continue to do that research and coordination with finance. And our consultant, also, we've been calling the county and talking to them about their purchasing policies and contracts, and also, we've made some inquiries with CCWD. So that item is still outstanding, but we will not move on that till we have that information. So we will continue to keep those items and give updates until they are complete.
Item number eight, council report. I will start with Councilmember Matoli.
Just enjoying the weather, and again, I think that this Friday is the last farmer's market. So I encourage everybody to come out for one last hurrah.
Vice Mayor?
And, let's see. I was the, I think I had mentioned last time about the American Graffiti and some of the merchants trying to get people together to do something there. the merchants trying to get people together to do something there. And it was just a very, it was a big success. Enough cars came, you know, classic cars came to make it really interesting. Some of them are hot rods, like there is American Graffiti, which is kind of cool, you know, they were all so proud. And then 111 people went to, into the theater, or there were more out in the street, but 111, and there was a, the headquarters of the theater said, there, of 130 theaters that showed it, it came in, we came in second, only to Modesto, which, of course, that's where it happened. So again, it just, I think it's an encouraging thing that, you know, to keep out in mind for the future, something we want, simple or easy, just to kind of throw something together every now and then. It's just a good idea to spring a lot of people down, and they had a good time. Everybody, I, the only thing that's funny that I keep hearing from everyone is, we should do this every week. And I go, well, once a month, every couple months, you know, so anyway. But anyway, but it was really two merchants and calling the car place and then putting on, you know, online, online, boom, 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 and everybody's just like, oh, the word went out, and everybody came down, so. I mean, not everybody, but anyway, it was a success.
Councilmember Oliver?
I attended the council of governments meeting on the 5th of September. I think noteworthy for everybody's interest would center around the following meeting more with the Transit Authority. They presented information on a contract award to develop and manage advertising that you'll see on the county buses. So that was the only thing significant on the agenda. They also introduced a report on system performance that was, I thought, pretty meaningful. It showed ridership, present on time, things like that, all the things you'd be interested in with respect to the buses. And then finally, they hinted at the potential development of an app that would interact with passengers to get a sense for, you know, how the schedule was working. There was even some suggestion that it would, might be live in that, you could, you know, kind of an Uber, kind of a thing, where you could see where the bus was on a map. So it's down the road, but sounded promising.
That'd be great.
That's it.
Councilmember Bill?
No report.
I attended LAFKA last night, and we had a presentation by CCWD regarding two legislative bills that are going to be coming down to water districts, cities, counties. There is a long conversation about our water districts in the county, working together to, toward this, and what type of grant money was available to fund the required plans. And I think at this time, maybe in the next future meetings, this council should get a briefing on both of those legislative items, as well as how possibly it could tie in with the November election with Part III. And CCWD currently is doing a lot of advocating on Sacramento on behalf of the county at large, which is great. But I think it's time that the city and UPA, UWPA, we start having that conversation locally as well, as what is our next agenda going forward, especially if it's going to impact our rate studies. I will leave it to you guys to bring that back for further discussion. With that, we will move on to calendar.
Before I start the calendar, I just want to say I found one action item tonight, and that is to compare our 12 and 1/2 percent discount on solid waste to PG&E's care program. Tomorrow, there's a COG-TAC meeting. The IRWMA meets tomorrow from 9:00 to noon at the TUD offices, and at 9:00 AM, CPPA at the Calvers Public Utilities District offices in San Andres. Then on Thursday at 8:30, we have a museum commission meeting. At 9 o'clock, the interview committee will be starting interviews for a police chief.
We got a venue for that?
Pardon me?
Have we got a venue for that?
Yes, it's at the conference room at the museum.
Does the commission know that they have to move?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. And 10:30 AM, DAC executive committee meeting at the DAC office. Tuesday, the 25th, 5:30 is UWPA, and then we're back here for council on October 2nd.
With that, is there a motion to adjourn?
Move, second.
All in favor?
Aye.